It's nine o'clock.
Good morning and welcome to the Board of Education Candidates Forum hosted by the Alamance Chamber. I'm Reagan Garrell, Vice President of the Alamance Chamber, and it's my pleasure to welcome you all here today. At this time, we're not gonna lose a moment of your time. I'm gonna introduce Tony Forrest, who will be moderating today's forum. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Good morning, candidates. On behalf of the Alamance County Chamber Advocacy Council, welcome to this candidate forum for the Alamance County Board of Education. Of course, my name is Tony Forrest, and I will be your host for the morning. I want you all to sit back and relax as we take a few minutes to introduce ourselves to the voters of Alamance County. Each of you will be asked questions in a random order. You will be given a maximum of two minutes for each question, even though you do not have to take the entire time for your answer. At the end of questioning, each candidate will be given one minute to summarize their appeal to our community for their support. There are just a couple of rules of engagement and things that I want you to keep in mind as we go forward. Invitations to participate have been extended to all candidates registered by the Board of Elections. There are four seats available. Eleven candidates are in the campaign. Only Ryan Bowden is unable to attend. Questions are formulated by the Alamance County Chamber Advocacy Council. And I want you all to understand that this is not a debate, but it's just an opportunity to introduce yourselves to the community. There will not be a question and answer session. And with all of that said, I'd like to just go ahead and get started. And I'm gonna ask the first question of Mr. Jason Payson. How are you this morning?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm doing fine, thank you. Would you mind telling us what your primary reasons for seeking a board seat would be?
Absolutely, I'd be happy to. So, good morning, everyone. My name is Jason Payson. And thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for the opportunity to speak to you all today. As the son of immigrants, I know firsthand the obstacles and challenges my parents faced in trying to secure the best for themselves and their family. When I was in fifth grade, we moved from New Jersey to North Carolina, and I found my homeschool to be Southern Middle. And I'm a product of ABSS schools. I went on to graduate from Southern Alamance. Despite having to learn and live in a system that didn't value my identity, that asked me to strip away parts of myself, I succeeded. I graduated top ten in my class. I secured nominations from Senator Burr and former Senator Edwards to attend the US Naval Academy and accepted an offer to attend the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill with a full scholarship from the Naval Reserves Officer Training Corps. I graduated with a degree in biology and also received my certification to teach secondary science while completing the Baccalaureate Education in Science and Teaching Program. I started my career at Graham Middle School and served the community of Graham in my role as an educator. And I saw the same things that happened to me and other marginalized students as an educator that happened to me 20 years prior. This is my why. How can we continue to do more of the same while not serving our community effectively? For all of our students, we must mean all of our students. It can't be with just words, but with actions and solutions. My career has led me to a place where I can bring those solutions back to Alamance County, back home. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. I very much appreciate that. I'm gonna ask the same question of Mr. Seneca Rogers. Mr. Rogers, welcome this morning, and we would love to hear from you as well. What are your primary reasons for seeking a board seat?
Well, thank you, Mr. Forrest, for the question. Thank you to the Chamber for having us this morning. And I am Seneca Rogers, one of the candidates for Alamance Burlington School Board. And I am an Alamance County native, born and raised here. A graduate of Cummins High School and then went on to graduate from North Carolina A&amp;T State University. I've always been a person who has been a big advocate for our public schools, even from my time when I was at A&amp;T, supporting things going on in the Guilford County Schools and helping with mentorships while I was a student at A&amp;T. But then also after my graduation, coming back to Alamance County, being a volunteer track coach over at my alma mater of Cummins High School and making sure that I could pass on my knowledge from going off to college and then my previous times at Cummins to the next generation. I always wanna be a person who can set an example for our next generation and show them that there's more out here to do and more things to be involved in. And just being an athlete or being a rapper or different things that we always saw coming up in our neighborhood. I always feel like that our boards and elected officials need to represent the same diversity that we see in our county daily. Alamance County is a very diverse county, so I feel like our boards need to represent that with racial, ethnic backgrounds, but then also with your living experiences. So, my why for this is to bring the neighborhood back to the table, to make sure that the voices of the teachers are always involved and being heard in any discussions that we are having with the schools. There's a lot of parents who I've met in a lot of different neighborhoods that feel like they haven't had those voices or haven't had enough of those voices. So, I wanna be one of those voices to stand up for them.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Paxey Simpson.
Good morning, Senator Forrest.
How are you this morning?
I am great.
I want to ask you the same question. What are your primary reasons for seeking a board seat? And your time starts now.
Thank you, Chamber, for inviting us here today. My reason for running from the Board of Education started many years ago. As many of you know, I ran for the Board for three attempts until I was successfully voted in. I ran on the platform of being an advocate and being the voice for the public. I started that with my foster children, finding that many of them did not have a voice. They did not have the support that they needed in order to be able to get the best public education that they could. So, I ran and I continue to run on that platform. I want to continue not only to make Alamance County, Alamance Burlington School System, one of the world-class best school systems, but I also want to make sure that we prepare young people to be able to leave high school, to be able to go to the workforce, to the military, or onto college. I truly believe there are so many things that we need to do in order for us to get to that world-class status. And having had the experience over the last 12 years, I feel that I need to continue to do that to see that we can be the best. I feel strongly in public education. I feel strongly that I have supported our teachers, our staff, and most of all, our community in my efforts as a school board member, and I would like to continue to do that. I know what our issues are. I know the things that we have done a fantastic job of. And most of all, I know that we still have a need in order to be that world-class system. Therefore, I am running again for the Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Linda Kenny, good morning.
Good morning.
I hope you're well this morning.
Yes, sir, and I hope you are as well.
I am. The same question. What are your primary reasons for seeking a board seat? And your time starts now.
As many know, I ran back in 2018. And so, this year, I decided I wanted to do it again. I knew the day after because my passion and my dedication to the schools, our teachers, our students, parents, and the community is just so huge. As a substitute teacher since 1999, I've had the pleasure of having students that really grabbed me, that I wanted to see them succeed. I've taught a lot of classes in our career tech. And these kids, they need any support that they can get. I'm a child that came from, when I was a child, I came from moving in somewhere. I didn't know anybody, so I felt left out. And I want these kids to feel like they mean something, that they can do well and be what they wanna be as they grow up and choose their career path. Not all have a career path of going to a university college, and some can go to a community college. I want them to see that there's other paths that they can take. Also, I would be a great voice for parents, teachers, students, and the community because they are important. It takes a community to raise children. We need to do the best thing that we can for them, and that's where I wanna do. I believe in everybody. I believe in them. That's why my passion and dedication, that is me, and I wanna do well. Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Paula Harrison. Paula, are you with us this morning?
Here.
How are you?
I'm just fine. I was muted. I thought it automatically did it when you said my name. I'm sorry.
That's quite all right. That's quite all right. It's good having you this morning. I want to ask you the same question. What are your primary reasons for seeking a board seat? And your time starts now.
Thank you. And thank you, Chamber, for hosting us today and giving us a chance to talk to lots and lots of people through this. I think that, I know that my main reason for wanting to serve on the Board is because I feel like I have lots of knowledge about the Board of Education and our school systems and how they work. How did I get this knowledge? I worked in the Alamance Burlington School System for 33 years. And I also worked in Caswell County for a year, and I worked in Guilford County for five years. So, I have 38 years of experience in working in the public schools. While growing up here in Burlington, I attended Alamance Burlington Schools and graduated, went to Elon College for two years, and then transferred to the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. I got my degree in early childhood education and taught kindergarten for the biggest part of my years at Andrews Elementary School. And then I went to Grove Park and taught there. And then, of course, went to Guilford County and taught at Reed Fork Elementary School. I've been a teacher. I've been a curriculum facilitator. I've been a special teacher with reading recovery. So, I've seen lots of things happen through our school system over the years and feel like I have a good insight into what's going on. I also am very active in my professional association with the North Carolina Association of Educators, and I want to be a voice for teachers, for staff members, and feel like I'm highly qualified to do that. So, I thank you for this opportunity again today and look forward to getting to know more people throughout the community. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. I'd like to say good morning to Brian Feely. Brian, how are you this morning?
Good, thank you. And thank you to the Chamber for hosting us and everyone for tuning in.
I'd like to ask you, Brian, to answer the same question. What are your primary reasons for seeking a board seat? And your time starts now.
You know, my journey to service on this board began, like many important ones, and that was a conversation at the kitchen table. And that was with my wife several years ago. I was trying to decide whether to accept the offer to come back to a job that I was excited to take at my alma mater, Elon University. Was thrilled to have the opportunity to come back to this community after graduating Elon a decade prior. But we were nervous, nervous about the state of public schools. That was the kitchen table conversation. We were living in Fairfax County in Virginia, great public school system. And we knew we were gonna be growing our family in the next several years. But we decided to move. And it was the best decision we've ever made and have never looked back. But once we got here, I decided to be a sponge, to learn as much as I could about the public school system, to figure out what our choices would be. And as somebody who believes deeply in public education, a mother who was a public school teacher for three decades, I decided not only to inform myself, but to see how I can play a positive difference. I feel it is incumbent upon all of us to do what we can to better our communities. And I thought I was uniquely qualified. Undergraduate degree in the liberal arts, a master's of business administration from Johns Hopkins University, and a competitive internship at the State Department Bureau of Educational and Cultural Affairs. And I've worked my entire career as a leader in nonprofit educational organizations. I thought I could make a difference. Another service that I've provided over the last four years and looking to keep the momentum going. We have made tremendous strides despite heavy challenges over these past four years since I've been on the Board. But I'm proud of ABSS, proud of public, and I think it's incumbent upon us to build a great system to attract employers, potential employees like me and businesses to our community. So, that's why I'm seeking another term on the Board of Education.
Thank you so very much. Sandy Ellington Graves, good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
I'm good, Tony. How are you?
I'm fine, thank you. I want to ask you the same question. What are your primary reasons for seeking a board seat?
Thank you for the question. Good morning, everyone. A seat on the school board is important to me because I wanna be a voice that speaks up, speaks for, and speaks out for the children in our county. I believe that an effective school board leader needs to build a collaborative partnership based on accountability and transparency with our parents and our educators and our citizens. There is no one that knows better what is better for a child. A child's well-being, a child's education, a child's success than that child's parent. When we're looking at classroom opportunities and classroom challenges, there's no one better to be a voice for that than our educators. There's nobody better to tell us what the community wants than our community. So, our citizens play an important role in that partnership as well. So, I believe that a seat on the school board means that we create a collaborative partnership with all of our stakeholders so that we all have a voice and a seat at the table for our children and what's best in education. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. I'd like to say good morning to Donna Davis Westbrook.
Hi, good morning, Mr. Forrest.
How are you?
I'm doing well, thank you. I hope you are.
I'm doing fine. I'm doing fine. I'd like to ask you the same question. What are your primary reasons for seeking a board seat?
Thank you, and thank you again to the Chamber for having us today. I am a lifelong citizen of Alamance County, having graduated from Cummins High School and later Elon College. I did my student teaching in ABSS, and I also worked as a teacher, a school administrator, and then later a central office administrator for a total of 32 years. And even though I retired with ABSS, I'm still in education in that I work as a preschool director at my church in our half-day program that we have here. Education is obviously my passion, and it's just who I am. I don't know anything else. I worked, again, I worked in public education for over 30 years. And during that time, I worked with many kids and teachers, and I built many wonderful relationships. And I think, I believe that the key for a successful student starts with the relationships that they build with their teachers and other support staff within their schools. I understand the feelings and the concerns of an educator because I've been there. I've walked in their shoes. It's not an easy job, but it absolutely is a worthwhile one. It's a calling, and not everyone can do it, and not everyone can understand it. But I wanna be part of our school system again because I do understand it, because I did it. And I believe that I have the knowledge and the experience and the willingness to build relationships with other members of the Board and provide productive communication so that we can only do what is beneficial for our children. I'm an advocate for all kids and for doing what's in their best interest because, of course, they're our future. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Kathy Dickens, good morning.
Good morning, Chambers. Thank you for having me. Hello, everyone.
It's nice seeing you this morning, and I'd like to ask you the same question. What are your primary reasons for seeking a board seat?
Well, I have grandchildren in the Alamance County system, and I look at how they struggle to learn. And they come to me, they ask me certain questions that, you know, that those stuff that's coming out now, we don't know it. Like, we should know it because everything has changed around. And so, I find them struggling and, you know, and I know a lot of kids are struggling with their work and all that. But I have worked with a lot of children in my time. I hold children events when I can, and I love being around children. I love listening to what they have to say. I love... They, actually, they're like little people to me. I rather talk to children sometimes than talk to grownups because they seem like they have more wisdom and more, you know, confidence in theirself, and they know what they want. They know how they want it. And a lot of them was like, I talked to my grandkids, and I asked them, what would you like the seat change in the school system? They like the bullying. That, you know, bullying is the worst thing in the school system nowadays. There is, a lot of that is going around and it's calling kids to kill themselves and, you know, because of they, they might not have, you know, nicer clothes than Suzie or Jim or whomever or whatever. And I just wanna make a change. I just wanna make a change and make a difference. I'm just a mom and a grandma, and I wanna see all children succeed and be successful in and out of school. And I wanna let them know you can make it and you can do it. Don't never let nobody tell you that you can't. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you so very much. John Coleman, we're saving the best for last.
I don't know about all that, but I appreciate it. Thank you guys for hosting us.
Absolutely. I want to ask you the same question that we've asked the others. What are your primary reasons for seeking a board seat?
A lot of it for me was a push from former teachers. One of my teachers at Cummins, who I've seen as a mentor, was like, hey, man, we need help. You need to run. I know you'll be a voice for all educators. And that's one of the reasons why I'm running. The state of our high schools, some of them are falling apart, and it's atrocious and needs to be addressed. Lack of classroom materials, concerns from the educators. And like I said, man, a push from one of my former mentors has really been the driving force of getting involved and running and making sure that our students have the brightest future possible. One of the things that you wanna be is an example to the mantra of be the change you seek to see. And, you know, that's something that I'm running on. I wanna be somebody that the community can come to if they have a problem. Have an open door, transparent as always, and make sure that the community has a seat at the table and that our teachers also have a seat at the table together. If you bring them all together at one time, then you're doing the right thing and you're doing the work that you should be doing. That's my reason for running.
Thank you so very much. Thank you so very much. We're gonna switch gears with a different question just to get a little bit more insight as to what makes these candidates tick. And with that said, I'd like to start with Paula Harrison. And I'm gonna ask the question, what are the most important issues facing the school system over the next two years?
Thank you, sir. I feel like the two most important issues are funding. And the funding can spread out to lots of different things. Funding for our staffs, funding for our buildings, funding for educational supplies, all the things that we need, that teachers need. I say "we" because I feel like I'm still a teacher, so I'll probably do that. So, but we need so much for, to effectively operate a school system. And then the next thing is communication. I think that to get those things done, we need to communicate. We need to communicate, not with just fellow board members, but school systems don't base their funding on money that they generate. The people that generate the funding for the school system are our county commissioners and our legislators. And I think it's very important that school board members have relationships, have contact with our county commissioners and with our legislators. And I think that's one of the things. The other thing is taking that money and spending it in the right areas, taking those funds and putting them where it needs to be. One of the biggest problems facing educators right now is they, as we move back into face-to-face instruction with the COVID situation, is the supplies that they need. And we've gotta be able to come up with the money and the resources to help them. And right now, most of the educators that I talk to say that that is lacking. So, I think funding and communication. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Mr. Payson, I'm gonna come back to you with the second question. What are the most important issues facing the school system over the next two years?
I think over the next two years, glaringly, one of the most important issues is our response to what's happened due to COVID-19. It's imperative that we provide as much consistency to our students and families as much as possible. This may come in the form of consistent scheduling for synchronous learning opportunities as well as asynchronous learning opportunities. Our teachers need relevant and up-to-date professional development on remote learning, especially in regards to developing relationships in a remote learning environment while embedding social and emotional practices in their teaching and learning to continue building those relationships with their students. Access to reliable broadband internet service is a barrier to many of our families. In the short term, we have to work with local businesses and community partners to provide internet access for our families who need it. But in the long term, we really must advocate for expanded internet access, especially in our rural communities, by working with state legislators and local officials to provide those opportunities. Every educator that I know would rather be teaching in person than virtually, but they want to do it safely and reasonably. District leadership should continue to be more transparent in its decision-making and bring in the community in its decision-making so it has more community buy-in, as well as including teachers from the very beginning. In the school district where I currently work, they formed a task force in its response to COVID. The members of the task force were made public, included teachers, student-facing staff on each of its working groups, as well as building-level and district-level leadership and support personnel. The task force publishes regular updates on its work publicly. This created more community buy-in and understanding, which I believe would really benefit Alamance Burlington Schools.
Thank you so very much. Kathy Dickens, we certainly appreciate having you here, and we would like to give you two minutes to answer the question as well. What are the most important issues facing the school system over the next two years?
The COVID-19 and getting the kids back in school. I like the way it is now, but I don't feel like it's safe for our kids to go back in school right now because of COVID-19, because we don't have the necessary means and to make sure that our children are safe in schools and our teachers and our staff, they're already in there. And I really don't feel safe for them being in there either. And I would rather for it to stay virtually like this until we know and we have a better handle. I would rather for it to stay virtually like this until we know and we have a better handle. And a better grip on it because it's, you, you, like they say, I look, I watch the news every day and I look at it and. You don't know who's walking around with it and you don't know who has it. And there's a lot of people walking around with the system that we don't know. And you know, some little kids, they don't like to wear masks. I put masks on my grandkids when they go out and I have a little three-year-old, when I turn around, she's got her mask off. And so that's my concern and that's my fear. And I think we need to keep it virtual right now. And then maybe later on after we get a handle on it, then bring the kids back in school.
Thank you very much. Sandy Graves, we would love to hear from you, um, you have, uh, two minutes to tell us, um. What are the most important issues facing the school system over the next two years?
Thank you. Um, probably the most important is, is what our school system is going to look like as we transition back into the classrooms. Um, COVID nineteen has created, um, unprecedented challenges for, for all of us. And I commend ABSS, our leadership, our students and our educators for their commitment. Um, as we continue to move forward and figure out how best to, to make the, to take the opportunity for remote learning and. I think that this has created an opportunity for our school system to. Work together to figure out what that looks like moving forward as we move back into the classroom. Uh, that it is important to have the voice of the parents and the educators. Um, safety is of utmost importance regardless of which plan we choose. Um, and then what that looks like going forward, um, for a funding, from a funding standpoint, um. Funding is always, and I think all the candidates will agree, that's always going to be, um, a challenge for the school system. I look at funding as investment and we need to make sure that our county leaders and our state leaders. Understand that that funding is the investment in our county, it's the investment in our children and, and our future leadership. So we've got to make sure that funding becomes a priority, um, as we move forward. Um, and then safe and healthy schools, um, that is. Creating self, safe and healthy learning environments for our kids to succeed in as we do transition back into the classroom. Um, the bond referendum is a huge stepping stone for that, but also mental health. It's, um, one thing positive that's come out of COVID is we have been able to staff every school. With a school nurse and I think that's a huge accomplishment for ABSS, thank you.
Thank you so much. Brian Feeley, uh, we would love to hear from you, um. We've got two minutes allocated for you to tell us what are the most important issues facing the school system over the next two years?
Great question, uh, yeah, I think our response to COVID is going to be, uh, the first part of it, but, and that comes in two fronts first. Uh, trying to get our students back into the classroom to maximize, uh, in-person learning. But to do that as safely as possible is going to be one key to it. Uh, the second is going to be a one to two year, so appropriate for this question, uh, response. How are we going to put in place, uh, remediation, intervention? Um, and a whole host of additional mechanisms to make sure that we, at the later grades, uh, we are getting students. Uh, accelerated towards being college and career-ready at the younger ages, making sure that their educational plane. Uh, is set, uh, for long-term success, so we're going to need to, um. Uh, roll up our sleeves in year two, not, it's not just focused on getting, uh, kids back in. I would take just a second to say how proud I am, we've delivered over, um, a million meals to students, nine thousand laptops. Uh, almost four thousand wifi hotspots and our teachers are working overtime, um, day in, day out to do their very best in this challenging time. So proud of the staff. Uh, longer term, we've got to continue to focus on student outcomes and achievement. Uh, that, uh, starts with teacher recruitment, uh, and retention, uh, because the magic happens inside that classroom. We've got to continue our progress with facilities, uh, with the help of the chamber, the community and, uh, the entire county. Together, we pass a historic bond that will improve six high schools, build a new one and prove. Elementary school, but we've got to have a long-range plan, uh, for improving elementary and middle school buildings as well. We can't repeat the mistake of last decade after the great recession and not investing in daily maintenance. Uh, really proud of the county and the superintendent, their long-range capital improvement plan. We got to see that to, uh, fruition and not make sure, uh, that we go backwards in terms of deferred maintenance. We have to keep our foot on a gas pedal because this is an investment in our community or school buildings.
Thank you. Mr. Rogers, we would love to hear from you with the same question. What are the most important issues facing the school system over the next two years?
Yes sir, and I think just like some of the other candidates have said, of course, the response. To COVID nineteen and getting our students back into school. I feel like everyone, including teachers and parents, want our students back into school. We feel like with them back in the school, they'll thrive, but we have to make sure in doing that, that we're doing it in a safe manner. And also prepared for when these students are coming back into school, making sure that support staff is there for them. Because we do know during this time, we were able to address the issue with school nurses. And they're going to be a vital part of the reopening of our schools because they have to. Be really implementing and working with the community and the board. On how their reopening looks from a safety medical standpoint. But then also too, you're going to have to address also with your mental health and social workers. On how that's going to need to be addressed with our students too. Because them transitioning back into school and not having those, those normal aspects and normal social interactions. We know some of that can also hinder them. And then two, thinking about a longer-term thing is we're on the verge of, um, a massive redistricting. That's going to happen in our schools. And with that redistricting which was addressed and is, and as a redistricting plan that was addressed for our high schools. We have to know too, that these different high school coaches, that students that are coming from. One high school switching over to a whole nother high school, that we're addressing this with our students. On how to implement them into these new high schools with our teachers. And also with those communities to make sure that when they coming over into that new high school, everybody is feeling welcome. Everybody is feeling like they belong there and you're not just delegating them like you were never a part of this, but now you are. So we have to make sure addressing that too.
Thank you so very much. Good morning again, Mrs. Simpson, we would like to give you two minutes as well to answer this question. What are the most important issues facing the school system over the next two years?
Um, in Almanz Burlington School System as well as throughout the country. One of the most major, um, things that we are going to have to address is keeping public. In the public education school system. We have a war going on in this country in an attempt to, uh, regulate and or change public education. And with all of us being, um. Pro, students of the system, we need to make sure that we ensure that we continue to have. Which I consider to be the foundation of this country, the right for children to get a good public education system. Um, one of the largest expenses for our school system, uh, is the growing need to fund our charter schools. Um, as well as other schools where we have to appropriate a certain amount of our public funding tax dollars to those institutions. As everybody else said, we talked about COVID and the effect of COVID. I pray that that's a short-term, um, thing. But we are going to have to learn how to adjust to the new norm, whatever that new norm is. And that will require a change within, um, what we know as our school system. And there's many facets to that actual, um, process to with COVID. Um, I think, um, we need to continue to update our strategic plan, our vision plan. Um, to ensure that, uh, we are still carrying out the goals, um, that our community has set forth in those plans. Um, we need to address, uh, what I consider we are more segregated in our schools and you can visually see that. And the inequities in our schools, um, and we need to assure that. The new high school is, and that redistricting, uh, does not entail the middle school, so we're going to do a lot of work on that, thank you.
Thank you so very much. Um, Mr. John Coleman, um, we would love to hear from you, um, over the next two minutes. Relative to what are the most important issues facing the school system over the next two years?
Uh, I think the next two years, you're going to see the effects of COVID, that it's, it's put on the school system, um. With, with the virus, you have seen the, the issues of equity and quality just on the forefront. And you can see where you've lacked in, in regards to remote learning and who has it and who doesn't. Uh, I would like to see a retention of the remote learning platform for moving forward. Because I feel like that's effective for students that can't come to the classroom, not. It, it works different for every student, but I think it's a good, it's a good program to have. Um, teacher, teacher retention is going to be huge too, I mean. A lot of teachers are feeling left out because of the way the staff survey was worded and they didn't really have their own personal say to put into it. And they, they were upset and rightfully should be, they, they didn't get a seat at the table and they didn't get a chance to answer the way they wanted to answer. It was a forced answer and it was the wrong answer. Uh, funding is always an issue, funding is, is big, it's, it's, uh. It's a county commissioner issue because they do the funding, but if you push, if you work with them, you can get the funding that you need. To make sure that all your goals and the strategic plan is followed and you have the funding for it. Uh, community input is always an important issue, you want the community to have a seat at the table. Community puts you in that seat to be their representative, they want you to work for them through what they have. You know, what they want to see. Um, I think one thing I would like to see as an important issue to me is, is, uh, teacher assistance. Um, teacher assistants have dropped trifold in this county and I would like to see that program. Uh, re-upped and I'd like to see more teacher assistants hired because I think it would really help, especially with. If we do a, uh, ABA B schedule, they could help with the remote learning phase while the other teacher teaches in class. Um, that's, that's, that's the important issues I see in this current state.
Thank you so very much. Linda Kenny, we would love to take the next two minutes to hear how you feel about this question. What are the most important issues facing the school system over the next two years?
Okay, as everybody has said, you know, just, um, coming back in after the COVID, doing it the right way and safely. Also, the funding, funding is huge, we need funding to continue to run our schools. To care for our schools, hire new teachers, teacher retention, that is a massive thing that we need. Cause we do have overturns, we do lose sometimes new teachers that need that support. A support system really needs to be put in place to make them feel welcome, help them with any issues that they have from the start. Also, I feel like we need more materials, resources for our teachers and our students. Um, those are issues that we need to take care of because we don't have the right thing. Our children suffer, our teachers suffer. And you want them to get the best of the best, so let's give them the best of the best. Um, I have had the opportunity to, uh, take a mental health first aid class and I have a certification for three years. We're going to face that issue far as where our children's state of mind is if they do return to school. We've got to be prepared, we got to know what they need. Also, um, I feel like we need parent involvement. You know, especially in the next two years, but always, we need parent involvement. Parents, you know, they kind of help us, they help us raise all these other children, so we do need that. And we just need to do the best that we can, thank you.
Thank you so very much. And we cannot close out on this question without, uh, hearing from Donna Westbrook's. And, um, Donna, we're asking the question, what are the most important issues facing the school system over the next two years?
Thank you. Um, if you look at my priorities, which you can actually find on my Facebook page, Donna Davis Westbrook's for ABSS Board of Education. Uh, they include, in, in general, uh, general speaking, safety, teaching and learning and community awareness. And which is very reflective of what our strategic plan is for ABSS. But to summarize just a little bit of that, uh, we need to have exemplary teach, teaching within the classroom walls. In order that our students are given every opportunity to be successful in this competitive and diverse world. Uh, they must have access to all programs and resources that we as a county can and should provide. We need to provide updated programs and resources to our teachers in order to meet our students' needs. And we do need personnel who can meet the needs of the whole child. Uh, our facilities do need to be consistently updated and repaired in order to have a safe. Uh, and environment that is conducive for learning. Um, because teaching and learning and building relationships with kids is in my heart and soul. Uh, I, I would like to also say that I would like to see a teacher retention plan also developed. My last two years, uh, in ABSS was as the Director of Teacher Recruitment. And it was a short amount of time, but I, I tried to put things in place that truly did support and mentor our teachers. And just more needs to be done in that area. Um, but we also, as part of that plan, we also need to include, uh, how to attract. And retain as well a more diverse staff, thank you.
Thank you so very much. I want to switch gears with, um, a third question. And again, we're giving you all, uh, two minutes to answer. And I'd like to, uh, start with, uh, Paula, uh, Harrison. And the question is, what steps does the school system need to take to improve racial equity in our schools?
Okay, um, I think that the biggest thing we need to do to, to, uh, increase racial equity. Is to be sure that our attendance zones, you know, working at our attendance zones and making sure all the zones receive all the. Uh, advantages of what our school system can offer. Every child should have an equal and equitable, uh, education, no matter where their zip code is. And no matter where, which school in the system that they're going to. Um, the other things that I think, um, that we need to do is to open communication and you're hearing me talk about that a lot. But we need to be in communication with their parents and the other stakeholders within the school system to see. The things that they see as things that we could be doing. We need to, uh, recruit a more, uh, diverse staff. Research shows that, um, if students receive an education, a year of education with a person that looks like them. Their chances of improving their education and their chances of graduating from high school increase tenfold. Uh, we have a unique situation in Almanz County that we're right in the middle of college town. I mean, we have, we have, uh, uh, colleges and universities all around us and we need to be, uh. Being in touch with all the students in the education departments there and giving them opportunities to recruit them. We also need to reinstate the teacher cadet program and grow in our own teachers in Almanz County. And I think that would help a lot if we had a more diverse teaching, uh, staff, but thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, Sandy Graves, we would love to hear from you relative to what steps, uh, the school system needs to take to improve racial, um. Equity in our schools.
Thank you Tony, great question. Um, I think that, um, we need to evaluate our student population, um, that student diversity. And we need to do a better job at recruiting and retaining educators that mirror our student diversity. Um, the majority of our educators right now are Caucasian educators and. It would be fabulous to be able to have, um, educators and leaders of, to represent those races. But to take that a step further, we also have to look at that student population at those schools within those districts and those zones. And we have to create school climates and school environments where when we hire those educators, they want to teach in those schools and those facilities. Um, so that we can match that and, and help with that racial equity, thank you.
Thank you so very much. Um. Mr. Pacey on, we would love to hear from you as to what steps does the, uh, school system need to take to improve racial equity in our schools?
Yeah, um, thank you Tony so much for this question and it's, uh, great to see that the, the chamber is taking this as a, as a, as. As an issue that they want to take on, um, and this is what I do every day as an equity specialist in Chapel Hill Harbor City Schools. Um, systemically marginalized communities' well-being must be taken into consideration by decision-makers. We should not be happy with the system where we can predict our students' outcomes based on the rate. We should not be happy with the system where we can predict our students' outcomes based on race. These disparities can be seen in all aspects of our educational system. When we look at the intersectionality between race and other factors such as gender, ability, language and socioeconomic status. The discrepancies widen even further. As a district, we must put equity in the forefront of all decision making from the classroom to the boardroom. If elected, this will be my priority. We must have a critical examination of how systemically marginalized groups will be affected by proposed changes. This must be part of our culture and process as we look to enact any new policies or programs. I commend the district's action in creating the Superintendent's Equities Diversity and Opportunity Committee. We must push further. As a board member, I would call for an aid in the formation and of an open and community-led council. Working with established community organizations that would advise district leadership as it works to create a more equitable system. Um, and that that includes prioritizing establishing the use of racial equity impact assessment and all decision making. Um, implicit bias and racial equity training for all staff members. Recruiting and retaining a more diverse teaching workforce will all lead to a creating a more inclusive environment. That would be beneficial for our students and will create more equitable outcomes for our students. I have a proven track record of advocating for equity in Alamance Burlington, fighting for every student. I will continue to champion these practices as well as build capacity and others to enact change.
Thank you. Mr. John Coleman, we would love to hear from you over the next, uh, two minutes as to what steps. Uh, does the school system need to take to improve racial equity in our schools?
Uh, diversifying your staff would help tremendously. When you look at the numbers, the numbers of diversity in your staff hires is not where it should be. It's predominantly white and it's predominantly female. Uh, what you would, what you would want to do is diversify your staff. Um, you want to make sure that every student has all has access to the special programs of a lot of parents like the splash program. And there's been talk of taking away the splash program, which is the Spanish immersion program. That is, I I I think that program needs to be expanded to every school. Um, and you want to make sure you give students the ability to thrive regardless of their tax bracket or their zip code. You want to make sure that every student is is allotted the same opportunities. Regardless if they go to Cummings or if they go to Southern or if they go to the new school, wherever it or what name may be. That's, that's, uh, one way you could address the equity issue. Another way is to. Make sure that the per people spending in our school system is on par with the rest of the state. Personally, I would like to see it above state level. Right now we are below state level and that should be addressed along with the. Diversifying of your staff hires. Um, five point two two of the strategic plan has this committee for equity by the superintendent. Uh, would like to see what that's going to look like. As of right now, I believe that it's just an idea and then there's nothing else there to it. So I would like to see that, uh, comes to fruition, but it needs to be done the right way. It's one thing to think about, it's another thing to do it and that's, and I would be a champion for those. Students that we are trying to get this equity for.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Patsy Simpson, would you mind taking the next two minutes to tell us what steps the school system needs to take to improve racial equity in our schools?
I loved how you said take two minutes because you know I could go on and on. Um, yes, um, it's very simple. First of all, we as the school system need to acknowledge. That we have inequities within our school. Um, and then we need to, as a board member, to look at every policy and procedure that we have. That contributes to these inequities such as student transfer policies. Teacher transfer policies, affidavits, redistricting. Um, the way we out recruit and retain teachers. We, how we allow certain things to happen, um, um. Knowing that in some school system, uh, districts, we have, um. Zones where we clearly know that they is a higher socio-economic and therefore, um. Students have opportunities that other students, so it's a change in culture, it's a change in acknowledgement. And it's needs to be a change to realize that the social injustices that's happening throughout. Our country as well as Alamance County is in within our school system as well. Whether that means hiring a director of equity and inclusion, whether that means having implicit bias trainings for our staff. But in order to have restored justice that is required, should be required throughout the district. The bottom line is you can't fix something until you acknowledge. And you can look at our schools and tell that our schools are being segregated more. They are more segregated now than they were in the late nineteen seventies. And it's about taking action, addressing it and doing something about it and stop talking. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Kathy Dickens, we have not heard from you on what steps, uh, the school system needs to take to improve racial equity in our schools. Would you take the next two minutes, please?
Yes, I thank you. Um, I would like to see more minority teachers in the schools because right now, um, there are not a lot of, um. Our kind in school systems. I would like to to see a lot more of them in there and I would like to, um. Really make sure that our children have the same chances as everybody else, all children, no children be left behind. Um, tutoring programs, I would like to see those in the school that they do not have them. I would like to. See them in every school so everybody will have a equal chance. Of getting the proper education and learning that they need to succeed to move on to go to college or. Wherever they like to do whenever they get out of school, um, whether start their own business or what have you, but. Um. I'm thinking we need to hold a, a teachers fair where, you know, we welcome, you know, all different minority teachers in. Because we have all different minorities going to schools and so we need the the same. Kind of teachers there so, you know, the kids can relate to and and be and feel more comfortable within just, you know. One. One, you know. It, I can't get my words out, but I know what I want to say, but it's not, it's not coming out right, but thank you anyway.
Thank you so very much. We understand. Brian, uh, Feeley, um, I'm sure you have an opinion relative to what. The school system needs to take to improve racial equity in our schools. We'd love to hear from you.
I appreciate the question. I think, um, this conversation needs to start with, uh, the overall culture. From, uh, leadership at the superintendent, the board level. Down to each one of our principals, making sure that we are indeed a school system and not a system of schools. Um, with across the entire county, uh, was. One of the reasons why during the interview process and selecting our next superintendent. Um, Dr. Benson and the board had discussions about this very topic and steps that would be taken. Uh, to move beyond talk into action. And a full year and a half ago, he brought the, uh, his intent to stand up the Diversity Equity and Opportunity Committee. That, uh, committee was developed this past winter. A diverse group of community members in and out of the school system brought together. Uh, meeting throughout the spring interrupted in the March April period, uh, due to the pivot to COVID. Uh, and their first, uh, report out, it's an advisory group to the superintendent, but their first report out, uh, through the staff member. Uh, leading that effort, um, with the superintendent to the Board of Education in June. Uh, looking forward to that group, making sure that the Board of Educations and the superintendent are filtering each decision. Whether it's policy based or strategic direction, uh, through a lens of equity, making sure that we understand the long-term impacts of decision making. I think our redistricting plan passed three years ago was incredibly important to this, a start, uh, paired with the bond. Once those attendance lines are redrawn, we will see, uh, uh, attendance zones that, uh, more accurately reflect the diversity of our community. Talked a lot about teacher recruitment, incredibly important. We need hiring committees committees that are diverse. But there's also a pipeline issue with diverse candidates in school of education, so we need to ensure that all of our staff have equity training. Uh, the first round of equity training was done for staff just two weeks ago and much more work needs to be done. They ensure all of our staff understanding, um, unconscious bias and.
Thank you so very much. Linda Kenny, would you mind sharing with us, uh, what steps the school system needs to take to improve racial equity in our schools?
Okay, thank you. That's a good question. I had dealt with that myself as when I lived in Alabama, so I kind of know how. You know, kids feel at times, but it is important to all our students to have, uh, diversity with our teachers. They need to relate to the the teachers, so we need to help staff that, but yet I'll say as we staff it. We need to support them, to be there for them so we can, um, help them be successful, to help their students to be successful. And also, um, the board, we need, um, a diverse board because we have. A diverse community and our schools are are diverse, so we really need a diverse board that they can relate to, that they can talk with. Um, also, you know, there are many opportunities that our children, um, can can seek. And we need someone like them that can speak to them, help them and help them to decide. Uh, thank you.
Thank you so very much. I I'd love to hear, um, from, uh, Donna Westbrook's as to how, um. Uh, she feels about what steps need the school system needs to take to improve racial equity in our schools?
Thank you, Mr. Forrest. Um, I too, um, will be saying things that you have already, uh, heard probably, but. Uh, I do believe that our staff, uh, all staff members of the school system need to have some type of equity and diversity training. Uh, we need to promote a school culture that respects and celebrates all this, all our staff, our students and the community. Uh, from which they are a part. Uh, we need to make sure that all the courses and the special programs that are offered. Uh, within our school system are offered to every school and to every child. That we need to be able to make sure that they are provided every opportunity regardless of the school that they attend and regardless of the community in which they belong. Um, we need to consistently update school policies as our community grows and changes. And then, uh, as I stated in the last question, I truly believe in developing a teacher recruitment and retention plan. That will also attract and recruit a more diverse staff. And, um, I also believe, uh, in a teacher cadet program that we've had before in the past. Where we can truly grow our on our own future teachers. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Uh, Mr. Rogers. Um, this is the last, uh, response to this, uh, particular question, but, uh, we're. Uh, awaiting your answer as to what steps the school system needs to take to improve racial equity in our schools?
Well, thank you, Mr. Forrest, for saying we're awaiting my answer to this. Feel more important, but, um. I feel like, like a lot of the other candidates said, but also like, um, Mrs. Patsy Simpson said, you have to make sure to go ahead and address the issue. You cannot circle around it. You need to go at it head on and really address it. And you address it through how you reevaluate the policies that are in place that are set to where they possibly are not even thought of. About the racial inequities that are already there. Also, you have to look at the different communities and see the racial equa inequities that are there in those communities. And even push it further with our county commissioners on the things that they will want to do to try to address the racial inequities that we have as far as our community. We do need to work as far as the retention and the recruitment of our teachers. And I would love for us to get into more partnerships with the different HBCUs that we have around our community. We have a lot of great ones that are not that far away, such as North Carolina A and T, Winston Salem State University, North Carolina Central. And we know from a lot of the teachers that we currently have in our schools, they come from these communities. But then also there are even students right now that are in our schools. That could be great teacher candidates going forward, so you need to catch them early on and want to show them. The new culture of what Alamance Burlington School System looks like. And we want to show that our whole community shows the same culture of wanting to address the racial inequities. But then to meeting our parents where they are and seeing the issues that they see every day in their home. And what they have to deal with with the racial inequities that's already there. I would love for our teachers and staff to all be required to have the racial, um, equity training and implicit bias trainings. So then we can make sure that we are addressing the culture as a whole to make sure we're raising up our children the right way.
Thank you so very much. Thank you so very much. Um, candidates, we're gonna, uh, switch gears just a little bit because, uh, we have asked you specific questions, but we wanted to give you. Uh, one minute to summarize, uh, your campaign and what you want. Um, uh, Alamance County to know about you. So what we're gonna do is for the next minute, we're gonna ask each of you. To talk about whatever you want the public to hear coming from this, uh, forum. And I'm gonna start, uh, with, uh, Linda Kenny. And, uh, Ms. Kenny, just give us, uh, in one minute, um, your summary of, um, uh, what you want us to know.
Okay, thank you. Um, I am a mother of two children, married thirty-one years, going on thirty-one years. Also, my daughter teaches high school at Southern High School. Um, I'm a substitute teacher. My heart is in the right place. I always talk from my heart. For what I believe in and I believe in our schools, I believe in helping in the diversity. Of making that better because that is an issue right now. And also I worry about the teacher retention, we need to worry about that. And also the materials that is needed to for everyone to be successful. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I hit myself on mute. Thank you so very much. We appreciate that. Um, Paula Harrison, you have one minute to, uh, give us your summary.
Okay, um, well, a vote for Paula Harrison would be a vote for equal and equitable education for all students in Alamance County regardless of their zip code. It would also give you a ca, a person on the board who's knowledgeable about our school system in Alamance County. I would be a voice for educators, staff members, parents. As decisions are made that affect their jobs and their futures. And I would be an advocate for all, uh, of Alamance County citizens. Thank you.
And thank you so very much. Brian, uh, Feeley, would you take, uh, one minute to summarize?
Sure, and thanks again for having us this morning. You know, my perspective on the board is shaped, um, from nearly twenty years as a leader in different nonprofit educational organizations, but also as a father. I've got a current third grader in the ABSS system and a pre-K student who will be a future ABSS, uh, um, student. And I bring all of that, uh, to the board, but. You know, the best predictor of future behavior, I believe, is past behavior and we need collaborative, civil, overthinking, respectful leaders on the school board, people willing to work with others. Uh, across the county. And, um, and if reelected, I promise to once again serve in that manner. You know, we've got tremendous challenges in our system. Uh, but we have done a lot over the last four years together as a community. We passed the historic infrastructure bond. I'll make sure that those projects are completed on time and on budget. Uh, we've worked with the county in new ways to finally begin addressing together. Not just complaining about it, but working together to, uh, to address long overdue for maintenance of our three point two million square feet. Uh, and we've done a lot, but there's many more things that we need to do. Um, and with just a minute, I'd like to say, uh, once again, I'll proudly serve the community of Alamance County. Thanks.
Thank you so very much. Thank you. Uh, Sandy, would you mind summarizing, uh, for us?
Sure, thank you, Tony. As a parent, I've been actively engaged in ABSS since nineteen ninety-eight, so that is. Twenty-two years of working with educators across elementary, middle and high schools on both personal and professional levels. I have the opportunity to see firsthand the opportunities and the challenges of teacher recruitment and retention, aging facilities, school safety. Inequities across our district, struggling academic performance, the challenge of redistricting. And the transition of six superintendents. I believe that a strong school system can drive tax revenues, real estate values and equality of life. Strong schools create opportunity and build wealth for our community. I believe that we all deserve a voice in what those that community school looks like. I asked for your vote on November third. I am not a politician, but I am a passionate parent and a lifelong citizen. That loves Alamance County and I ask you to take this ride with me for the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Uh, Mr. Pacey on, would you mind telling us, um, in one minute, uh, what your summary is all about?
I do not take lightly the work that is before us, and when it comes to creating equitable systems, I have made it my life's work. I'm not waiting to be elected, I'm not waiting to be elected to make change. I'm working on that now. Just last night, I held a panel discussing recruiting and retaining a diverse teaching workforce. You can find the video on Facebook and it'll be posted on our website, and I encourage our leaders to really delve into that so that they can bring those solutions into our system. We must focus on building a better system, and we must do that work together as a community dedicated to improving the educational systems in the county, state, and nation. All voices must be included in this discussion. It is beyond time for Alamance County to lean into this crucial work. I will ensure that the marginalized voices in our community, whether they be students, educators, or families, have ample and continued opportunities to center their voices. My lived experiences make me uniquely qualified to be an effective advocate for all, all of our students, all of our educators, and all of our families, and I humbly ask for your vote.
Thank you so very much. Mr. Rogers, would you give us your summary, please?
Yes, sir. And a vote for Senator Rogers is a vote for the neighborhood. I'm bringing the neighborhood experience with me to the board. My campaign slogan is, "We are the neighborhood." It is a play on my name being Mr. Rogers, but it is the new era way of saying, "It takes a village to raise a child." And so I want to be a part of that village that continues to advocate for our students, our teachers, and our community. I would be a person who would always want to hear from the community, always pushing what the community wants, wants their board to look like, and want their board to discuss, and also make sure that the teachers and our students have their voices at the table too. I want to be a person who advocates for a more effective and efficient maintenance plan, continue to push for diversity in our classrooms, increase in our teacher and support services in our schools, maintain our school safety, dealing with COVID, and just overall safety of our schools, and continue to support the salary increases for our teachers and staff. So please vote for myself, Senator Rogers, because we are the neighborhood, and the neighborhood is back at the table.
Thank you so very much. Patsy Simpson, we would love to hear from you with your one-minute summary.
Okay, first of all, I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce and your various committees within that, because you truly have exhibited what a community partner looks like, and we get, I just want to thank you. It's very simple for me. It's about using my talents, God-given talents and abilities, to be able to ensure that every student in our school system will have a high-quality education and being the voice for the people. And I want to continue another four years to be the voice for the people, which means discussing what needs to be discussed, fixing what needs to be fixed, and being transparent and just honoring our employees and doing the best that I can do as a board member. I am a team player, I am very vocal, but in doing that, I try to make sure that we look at all things from every lens to ensure that we're doing the best that we can do to provide what is needed to our community. Thank you so very much for this opportunity today. I appreciate it, and I ask for your vote.
Thank you so very much. Donna Westbrook, would you give us your one-minute summary?
Yes, sir, and thank you again for having us. I've devoted all my adult life to public education, again, primarily with the Alamance Burlington School System. Again, not only did I graduate from ABSS, but also Elon College. Alamance County is my home, and moving or working anywhere else was never an option for me. Again, I worked as a teacher, a school administrator, and a central office administrator during my time with ABSS. My two children graduated from ABSS as well, and now my grandchildren are beginning their journey with our school system. And I may be retired, but I'm not finished yet. As stated earlier, I understand the feelings and concerns of an educator because I've been there, I've walked in their shoes. It's not an easy one, but again, it's absolutely a worthwhile one. I believe, again, that my knowledge, experience, and willingness to build relationships while having productive communication with all school board, with all school and community stakeholders can only be an asset to the school board, and I hope you will consider voting for me for one of the open seats because it would be a true honor and privilege to serve our county in this capacity, and I will always, I promise, I will always do what's in the best interest of our kids.
Thank you so very much. John Coleman, we haven't heard from you with your summary.
Yes, sir. I had the honor to attend Cummings High School, and then I transferred to Southern Alamance. That difference was night and day. As Patsy said, the segregation in our schools is very clear. During that transfer process, I saw that firsthand as a student. It was treated the way someone from Cummings would be treated at Southern. It was atrocious, and it was wrong, but I am running to make sure that every student has the same opportunities regardless of where they go to school at. We want to make sure that every student has those opportunities. We want to diversify the workplace, want to make sure teachers are paid, want to make sure that we have school employees and support staff in every school in forms of a nurse and counselor and social worker. Ending the school-to-prison pipeline is big for me, and that is something that will be addressed upon being elected in November. I look forward to serving this community honorably and abramally in the not-so-near-future.
Thank you so very much. Kathy Dickens, we are looking forward to hearing your one-minute summary as well.
Thank you again, Chamber of Commerce. If I'm elected, if I'm not elected, I'll just put it this way. If I'm elected, I'll work hard for your children. I will make sure they come first, the parents come first, the staff come first. You will have assets to me night and day. I don't care what time it is, you can call me if you want to talk about certain things, if something comes to your mind that you want to bring up, if there's an idea you want to share, or you want to just talk about certain things about the school. I'm going to be there. I'm going to be a doer, not a talker. I love children, I'm a children's advocate, and I've always held events for children, and that we, the children are our future, and we need to make sure that they have a great one. Thank you.
Thank you so very, very much. Let me say to all of the candidates how much I have enjoyed hosting this forum today. It has absolutely been a pleasure to have a chance to talk with all of you, and I know that the chamber appreciates the desire and willingness of each of you to serve our children. We wish you all the very best going forward with this election, and you have our utmost thanks for believing in our children and for believing in this election process. And again, we thank you so very much. I also want to give a special thanks to Cindy Brady for putting this, or being the mastermind for bringing this whole thing together. And Reagan, I can't tell you how much I appreciate your steering this ship in the right direction. And Reagan, with that said, I'm going to bow out now, but have we forgotten anything or is there anything else that we need to cover?
I would like to thank you, Tony. I'd like to extend a big thank you to you for doing such a great job moderating this panel today. To all of you candidates, thank you for your time this morning. Thank you for sharing your vision with all of the folks that wanted to join us today. This is being recorded, the forum has been recorded and will be shared later this week on our social media. So if you do not follow the Alamance Chamber on Facebook, we encourage you to do that. We also encourage you to share this recording with your network people. This is important information, and we want to ensure everyone has access to that. I will invite the candidates, before we end this forum, to offer your campaign information in the chat bar if you haven't done so already. We'll give you just a minute to do that. Again, Tony, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All of you candidates, thank you. We appreciate you, and with that, I will wish you all a great rest of your day. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Good seeing everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.